Excuse me. May I have your attention, please? Thank you. This is, uh, we'll call the meeting to order of the Jasper City Council, uh, session Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Today we'll have the prayer by Assistant Chief Paul Tucker and the pledge by City Planner Brandon Carter. Please rise.
I would like to thank the citizens of the city, the students that are here today, all of them, and we're very proud of their achievements. I pray that you give them and bless them throughout and gather them throughout the course of their year. Uh, more pray that you will protect the city. Pray that you be with the council mayor's sword and God in his name, this is the city. Jesus, thank you.
Put the flag. The nation is divided by the United States of America. It is a revolution for which we stand. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting held March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 And yes. Item three, consider amendments to the agenda, Captain.
Council members, we do have two items to add to the agenda this morning. We are approval. First item is to consider going into an exact accession to discuss any litigation. And our second item is travel for Carmen Harris and another employee at San Antonio Park to begin the SWAN training session.
Uh, item four, consider approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm aware of the agenda with the amendment to add.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 And yes. Item five, this is a really exciting moment. Recognize members of the Jasper High School marching band, cheerleaders, wrestling, and girls' basketball championship teams.
Council members, it's a great morning in Jasper. Why, we have an opportunity this morning to recognize a number of our students in Jasper High School. Specifically, today, we recognize state champions in four areas. Our band, our cheerleaders, two individual state championships in wrestling, and girl basketball. Councilmember Captain, you're the longest officer in councilmen. How many years?
I have three or four.
Right, ten, Captain? I think I did about right. Now, uh, in the new year, sorry for my schedule, if you ever had the opportunity to recognize this many state championships.
If you're still back, you're definitely qualified there.
Your folks, you just stand yourself in a major, major way, and, uh, I can't tell you as mayor of the city, how proud I am of it, and I think I, uh, represent the council in my thinking. Uh, we have proclamations, uh, sending out our recognition, and at this time, I'd like to begin to work through that. First group that I would like to have come to the front is our representative from the band.
You got it. Before we can stand tall, we're gonna get there.
Some of these guys don't come in front of me completely. Can't get too wide. Be more right than that.
Let me remember to share with you the proclamation, Jasper High School marching band. This evidence, the recognition is hereby bestowed upon the Jasper High School marching band for winning the twenty twenty-three Alabama marching band five A state championship for the banner. The Jasper High School marching band has exhibited a great deal of natural ability, character, and outstanding experience of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and are hereby highly commended for their accomplishments. And I, the mayor of the city of Jasper, and on behalf of Jasper City Council, and all the citizens of this community, do deem it an honor and privilege to present to the Jasper High School marching band the certificate of recognition and wish them in their future endeavors.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Back row two. Will do our.
Next is our marching cheerleader. Cheerleader, I believe this is a state state championship, is that right?
Yes.
Good. Outstanding. Cheerleaders, let me share with you the, uh, certificate of recognition and, uh, and say to you how proud we are to hope you're doing what you've done to represent this city of Jasper High School. This evidence of recognition is hereby bestowed upon the Jasper High School marching cheerleader for winning the twenty twenty-three Alabama High School Athletic Association five A traditional state championship and the twenty twenty-three Alabama High School Athletic Association five A Yang Day state championship for the banner, the first in school history. The Jasper High School marching cheerleaders have exhibited a great deal of natural ability, character, and outstanding experience of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and are to be highly commended for their accomplishments. And I, as mayor of the city of Jasper, and on behalf of Jasper City Council, and all the citizens of this community, do deem this an honor and privilege to present to the Jasper High School marching cheerleader the certificate of recognition and wish him well in his future endeavors. Next, we have two individuals, state champions, in the area of wrestling. So first is Carter Reed. Now, that's Carter to come forward. Carter, congratulations to you on your accomplishments, and, uh, let me share with you the certificate of recognition. Uh, this evidence of recognition is hereby bestowed upon Carter Reed, the Jasper High School wrestling for winning the Alabama High School Athletic Association five A wrestling individual state championship at one hundred and seventy-five pounds for the banner. Carter Reed has exhibited a great deal of natural ability, character, and outstanding experience of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and is to be highly commended for his accomplishments. And I, as mayor of the city of Jasper, and on behalf of the Jasper City Council, and all the citizens of this community, do deem it an honor and privilege to present to Carter Reed this certificate of recognition and wish him well in his future endeavors. Next, state champion, Cole Carter. Cole, we can call him. Jasper High School wrestling, Cole Carter. This evidence of recognition is hereby bestowed upon Cole Carter, the Jasper High School wrestling for winning the Alabama High School Athletic Association five A wrestling individual state championship at two hundred and fifteen pounds for the banner. Cole has exhibited a great deal of natural ability, character, and outstanding experience of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and is to be highly commended for his accomplishments. And I, as mayor of the city of Jasper, and on behalf of Jasper City Council, and all the citizens of this community, do deem it an honor and privilege to present to Cole Carter this certificate of recognition and wish him well in his future endeavors. Hey, because I don't know if I can, uh, say, uh, I have to come forward. Councilmember, let me tell you what I told this group when I was at the high school just a few days ago, uh, that they could possibly be certified in free cardiology in Cleveland, even. I was at this game, state championship, I never occurred, and in the third quarter, I went through about the most detailed party examination. But they came out, they did a great job, and it was an exciting day, and, uh, some ladies, I can't say enough about, uh, your performance and the excitement that I experienced, but, uh, uh, a few Saturday night and morning games. Jasper High School girl basketball, this evidence of recognition is hereby bestowed upon the Jasper High School girls' basketball championship winning twenty twenty-three Alabama High School Athletic Association five A state basketball championship for the banner, the first in the school history, the first in the school history. The Jasper High School girls' team have exhibited a great deal of natural ability, character, and outstanding experience of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and are to be highly commended for their accomplishments. And I, as mayor of the city of Jasper, and on behalf of Jasper City Council, and all the citizens of this community, do deem it an honor and privilege to present to the Jasper High School girl basketball team the certificate of recognition and wish them well in their future endeavors.
Thank you, everyone. Item six, consider approval of amendments for the following items. Uh, we have two, and Kelly Lawrence.
Good morning, Councilwoman Lawrence. Add, we have the Ryers, Bluegrass, and Barbecue again from the store lots, it's on Saturday, April sixth. Um, this is your April and first group again. Set at time will be twelve noon in the store time, thirteen AM, and they'll be open by nine PM. They are requesting a walk-in till nineteen straight for twenty-four that minute to get there. Um, because they understand we should consider the big leaders, of course, nobody is special in the country, and approval has been given by our least likely. And, um, they think the Jasper High School championship is supposed to be against Harris. They can't care as to how long it's gonna take.
Do you have any questions? Do we have a second? I'll settle that. All in favor?
Yes.
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 And yes. And we'll take just a brief moment to allow the minds to read the bill things so that they can keep growing. Okay, item seven, receive report and consider a recommendation for the audio and visual equipment bid for the new city hall. Jessica Cook?
Good morning. Councilmembers, for item number seven, receive report and consider a recommendation of audio and visual equipment for the new city hall. We received one response, solicited from the member H D I Chrome's LLC. Ever committed and reject the bid, received to negotiate the closing terms.
Do I have a motion regarding this report? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Councilmembers, for item number eight, I request permission to send bid invitations to the city's human services contact.
Do I have a? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Item nine, consider adoption of a resolution for nuisance abatement of unsafe structures.
Good morning, Yale School. We have, uh, several today, and they're related to drug and banging property, so I'm just gonna do, and I guess, or do you want to do it by different? Zoom in, okay. Uh, the first property is twenty-five nineteen Corona Avenue, District Five. Second is twenty-one hundred Delaware Avenue, District Five. Third is twenty-three oh four Thirteenth Avenue West, District Five. Twenty-nine eleven Sixth Avenue, District Five. Thirteen twenty-one, Twenty-Second Street West, District Five. That's all for District Five. Keep moving. Six oh six Seventeenth Street West, District Four. Twenty-two oh eight Sixteenth Avenue, District Four. Twenty-two oh three Sixteenth Avenue, District Four. Seven oh eight Fifteenth Avenue, District Four. And that is all of the concerned groups.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to consider adoption of the public resolution for these unsafe structures? All in defense. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you, Brandon. Item ten, consider adoption of a resolution to declare a portion of Corona Avenue, also being known as honorary Mary Lou Ridley Wright Avenue. Mayor Omer?
Councilmember, in private, world fashion, um, all attendants, we heard the request, uh, to, uh, recognize Mary Lou Ridley Wright through, uh, a resolution, uh, established on an honorary, a portion of Crystal Boulevard, off the request, about as well a language as you could ask for, certainly substantiated, uh, in my man, the reason for, uh, doing this, and out of how your vote consideration to grant this request, uh, don't be a political out of how my district department will get this in place.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Item eleven, consider adoption of a budget amendment to provide additional funding to Beverly State Community College for the Jump Start President and Workforce Development Academy.
And councilmembers, we interviewed this at the last council meeting, so it is ready for your approval, but it was to provide Wacom College Jump Start forty, additional thousand dollars, um, the Wacom College Workforce Development fee to thousand, so the city would be adding an additional ninety thousand to, uh, provide, um, additional funding for, I guess, Beverly State, that is Wacom College. But, uh, it is ready for your approval at this time.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Somebody.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. And then, Captain, item eleven, may I, which is one of the amendments?
Yes, and if Carmen Harris, the owner, can tell us a little bit about the church.
Good morning, Council. Um, I'm requesting approval for our SWAN conference, um, that covers our CEU and landfill certification this year for Chris Hall and myself. The conference will be held in Orange Beach, and the dates are April first through the fourth. It is much appreciated.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Item twelve, introduce budget amendment twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, okay, to provide funding for repair and maintenance paving, a Pavota tractor for the street department, and audio and visual equipment for the new city hall.
And councilmembers, if those are the amendments that I am going to use as a result for our session, I, you heard a request from the street department for the, uh, purchase of a new Pavota tractor, and that would be seventy-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars coming from the capital improvement fund. You also heard the need to provide some hatching, uh, for, um, Old Birmingham Highway, and then on Twentieth Street, that would be funding coming on your gasoline and state street funds of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we are going to go ahead and introduce what we believe the funding will be for the audio and visual equipment and the new shared, uh, auditorium for the, uh, Jasper City Hall, and that would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that's an estimate, we'll work to try to get that number below that, but at this time, we need to go ahead and get some funding in reviews. That funding is coming from our, or funds as, that has been provided from the twenty twenty-two awards.
Thank you. And this is an introduction, so if you'd like to check it out. Thank you. Item thirteen, conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance resuming a one point six acre plus or minus parcel of land. Russ?
Ladies and gentlemen, now is the time and the place for the public hearing on rezoning of property located at Area one three two four six Highway seventy-eight in Jasper, from the D two commercial zoning district to the implant light manufacturing zoning district. Uh, the property has been posted, the notices have been sent in accordance with Alabama law. This, uh, rezoning was recommended for adoption by the planning commission by vote of five to four. As I mentioned, this is now the time and place for the public hearing, so if you desire to come out of this or able to do so at this time.
Thank you, Russ. Um, like you said, this is a public hearing.
I, I represent the Jasper, we've all approved, and we are here to answer any questions to, uh, Councilor Magerhage with regard to our request for rezoning that was approved by the zoning council. Uh, we've made our position known to the council on numerous occasions, work sessions since prior public hearings, as well as the, uh, planning council, and I'm here to answer any questions for a number, go back, or just iterate or reiterate what we've already said, so if you have no question, or if you have any questions, I'll be committed to answering, y'all happy? Did you hear?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Council, any questions?
Are you asking, we got any questions coming to the business?
No, this is to the council college, and.
But, I'm sorry.
This is for the council, is my understanding, it's not the only question, I'm not answering questions at all. Is that correct?
Thank you.
That is correct, I.
At this time, we will allow two people to speak in opposition to this same topic. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to?
In legal papers, in the legal papers, it says all persons. Uh, all persons who drive shall have an opportunity to be heard in opposition to argumentated opposed.
Russ, I want you to address that.
Well, uh, I think that that's a fair point, there's also the ability of the council to limit the number of times that the same point is made. It's something that.
That's all, that's all.
Yes, ma'am. If someone has a different point to make about the same issue, I think that may be a fair, a fair point, but if it's multiple persons saying the same thing, then at that point, I think the council has the right to let the amount of information that's represented at the public hearing, if anyone has any new information, certainly that, that may be something that the council would need to consider.
So at this time, does anyone have anything that they wish to say in opposition to? Except, please come to the, please come, come to the public. Please state your name and then whatever you want to say.
My name's Larry Elliott, I'm resident here in Jasper, Alabama, in three thousand and three six book claim, and I'd like to present to the city council about, uh, approving this rezoning, uh, I think it's been, uh, uh, best interest of the citizens of Jasper, Alabama, and the churches, uh, I'm a member of the first. Uh, I'm a member of First Baptist Church here in Jasper, Alabama. And, uh, the way I understand it, I believe that y'all, when y'all vote to, to allow this cannabis to be, um, not, it is the process here in the city of Jasper, uh, close to, uh, Glorious Fellowship Church, um, y'all felt like it's in the best interest and the safety and welfare of citizens of Jasper, is that right? Is that what I read in the newspaper, is how y'all voted and how y'all felt about this? Is that correct? Anyway, I don't, I don't understand how y'all think that's in the best interest, is, interest of the citizens of Jasper, Alabama. I've been a, you know, a citizen here since, I've been, my residency since nineteen seventy-five, after getting off the service, I served in the Navy. And, um, I don't see where this is going to benefit our community. All this is going to do is cause more problems for our community. I realize that this cannabis, cannabis is, is a life on that. And the way I understand it, you can be purchasing of, of local harvests here in Jasper. And I don't understand why we want to have, uh, just fisheries all up in our highway here in Jasper, Alabama. And, uh, I, I think, you know, the, the council here, I think, you know, they voted in representing people of Jasper. And I, I don't feel like y'all, it seems like to me, I'm, 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 it's a large person, it seems like to me, y'all's best interest in this Jasper development group is to, is wanting to make money off, off process this year in Jasper. And I just feel like, I can't understand why are y'all going to allow this rezoning to be rezoned right here, it coming into our city. I mean, I don't understand it, and I think, I just asked y'all to feel the plea, you know, reconsider this. I know I'm a member of First Baptist Church here in Jasper, Alabama. And I'm sure all y'all are, are in churches here, but I don't understand this, and I, I just asked y'all, please, to not allow this rezoning to be in our cities. And to grow right here as you're coming to our city. Um, I don't see what benefit in the world that's going to serve the people here in Jasper. I mean, you know, it, that's, that's my position on this, not on, maybe everybody else feels in here. But I do not see the life of me, like anybody who wants that to be allowed here in our city. You know, from what I understand, where this medical cannabis is allowed to be processed in the city, what, what is a recreational, uh, marijuana? And, and, and it's just going to cause more problems for our city. I mean, we're already kind of drug covered here in our city, and all this is going to do is add to it. And I do not understand why you didn't consider this. And that's my, that's my position on it, and I think I represent a lot of people in the city of Jasper here. And I hope y'all will please reconsider this, and I, I just asked y'all to vote y'all's conscience and break back at this. I mean, I don't understand it at all.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, we appreciate your opinion. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to? Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name is David Self. Uh, first, I want to thank the council every time y'all offered, y'all have listened to me speak at different meetings. I appreciate y'all's attendance and listening, but I am not for cannabis, I am not for any good. We just honor our young people. At the age of five, I took my first crack at alcohol and came out of college. Why? Because it was a label. We make cannabis here in our city. We're going to make a label for our young people. Our young people can forge a medical certificate. Cannabis will enter in our juices. We don't force that here in Jasper. We want our kids to have something nice to do. We spent money on an industrial park to get businesses here. Why do we make the result of business next to a church when having industrial park? We've got places out there for businesses. So I want y'all to reconsider, do not rezone this area property for evidence. Use the industrial park for businesses that we need to get here in Walton County to make our county and our city grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, uh, notice that anybody in line is different. Thank you. Can you hear me without this or turn it off?
We need it, we need it.
Need this, okay. For over a year now, the concerned citizens of Jasper have clamored to get the attention of our city officials, supposedly our elected officials, uh, representing us. Asking first that you opt back out of marijuana dispensary sales, and then that to protect our city from other marijuana operations like growers and processors by zoning very strictly and refusing to grant licenses. When we weren't heard, we organized a petition drive, bringing signatures of two hundred and fifty citizens so that you would understand that we represent a sizable group of your constituents. When that was ignored, we continued to make appeals and brought to each of you supporting and expert data. We filled your meeting room with citizens to overflowing so that forty-plus people stood outside the doors as we asked you to listen to us. Though only three of us were allowed three minutes each to talk to you at that meeting, we have persevered and come to every work session and public meeting in order to plead for you to listen and respond to our advice. When our appeals were refused, we attended planning and zoning meetings, asking that street regulations be set before license to any growers and processors were granted. So that at least we could be sure they did not operate on the highway, near churches, schools, et cetera, but would rather be relegated to the industrial park. You not only refuse to comply to our requests, but have made plans to rezone an area on the highway specifically to accommodate a marijuana processing business that is in close proximity to a church and future school. All appeals to stop this have fallen on deaf ears, and today, as we come again to stand and be heard, we are very aware that this meeting is just a formality. And that regardless of what is said at this public hearing, you will probably do what you want to do. When government officials forget that we are constitutional republic by the people and for the people, and when elected officials become petty and forget that they are public servants, our system becomes broken and corrupt all the way from local to national. This corruption is evil. We are seeing this blatantly at a national level and are rising up against the totalitarian regime, regime that is trying to capture our nation. I believe we will prevail against it in isolation. But we are also waking up to this state of local levels, and we can't let it continue. Though this year-long process, approved this year-long process, we discovered impropriety and as a result filed an ethics complaint for corrupt practices in our leadership. We will continue to watch closely those who are involved in running interference for these dishonest practices. I spoke with the Adamsville mayor recently, and I asked her how they have protected their city from the marijuana industry. She said basically that they just aren't going to opt in for dispensaries and are resolved to refuse licenses to all businesses that the citizens don't want there, such as marijuana growers and processors, quick loan companies, and bank jobs. She said, I'm almost there, they have two pastors and a pharmacist on their city council and are buried together, and they're resolved to protect their city and are just not going to let these businesses become the face of it. That seems so honest and simple, as though there are no headquarters, just sermon halls. I regret to say what I will say next, because I consider many of you friends on a personal level, and I know that there are a lot of good things that you've done, and we're grateful. But our goal as concerned citizens will have to be to replace you in coming elections with those who haven't forgotten what it means to be a public servant. And remember that our country was founded on we the people, not we the pests. I was close with a quote by Dietrich Von Hofer, an anti-Nazi dissident who died for his standing his temper. Silence in the face of evil is evil itself. God will help, help us give us, not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act. God bless you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to say?
Yes, we have one.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate it, saw you taking it in the building, I couldn't see, they deeply viewed you like cataracts, couldn't see good. We have that problem in this county, I know firsthand, and family experience with drugs, overdose, and death. Have a brother, Chris, was a clear killer.